At this time, I would ask that Mr. Guines say the prayer and Ms. Campbell, the clerk, will lead us in the pledge. Mr. Guines.
Let us pray. Father God, give us all good graces. We come to you, O Lord, thanking you for your many, many blessings. We acknowledge you as the ruler of our world, and we ask for your blessings here in the United States. Bless our country, state, county officials, and all the decision-making that they make. Bless the people in this room and our leaders as we tend to Biloxi business. We like to ask, Father God, if you put your, especially, put your arms around one of our council members as he's going through trying times. Bless him, his wife, his family, and we ask all in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okie dokie, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. All right, that being the case, if the clerk, I think we have to vote on that. All in favor of suspending the rules? That's a 7-0 vote for the clerk. The clerk will read the revisions to the agenda, please.
To the policy agenda, we're substituting 4A ordinance to amend the Ad Florum Tax Exemption Program qualification for exemption and adding 4D resolution in opposition to Senate Bill number 2381 and House Bill number 1480 in its present form, which would redefine legal gaming sites and potentially invalidate existing leases and agreements with the city.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve an amended agenda. A motion by Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor of the amended agenda? All opposed? There being none, that's a 7-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, everyone, to the first meeting in February, and it's good to have the whole crew here. George, good to see you face-to-face, and Kenny, you know, Lisa has been in our thoughts and prayers. And better every day, well. Couple of things to report on before I ask you to spread the minutes of the expense of the Biloxi travel card to the minutes, but before that, a couple of things to report on. We have the Biloxi Children's Parade coming up here at 10 o'clock from I-110 to downtown. That'll start Saturday, 9:45, to have a fun way for the children to celebrate Montegro. There'll be a shoebox, annual shoebox floats, and Ms. Hunt will actually give us a report at some point in time before those things happen in Montegro. And you see these beans here. We have March for Mayors, and I think our assignment is to collect beans and to supply the need for those foods, but I think we can, anybody who's interested in dropping off things at the donations can be accepted. One-pound bags of beans is what we're targeted this year at Snyder, at City Hall, at Lopez Quay Public Safety Center, Biloxi Visitor Center, and any fire station. One other thing to report, I think in March '17 through '19 is this manufactured homes show, which is a big thing. There'll be a number of manufactured homes that will be set up on the site at the IP, and I think they're excited about, you know,
Fifty houses.
Fifty houses to be actually constructed, so there'll be some traffic interruption, but, you know, they'll be through the 20th through the 25th of March, I believe. Yeah, thousand-room nights that will bring folks into town. This is, it's a very good thing that was in Tunica, now it's in Biloxi, so we're excited about that. And the last thing, as I said, would ask you to spread the expenses to the minutes of the Biloxi travel credit card. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have any departmental reports. At this time, we'll have the council reports. Welcome back, Mr. Lawrence. You're up.
Well, I'm glad to be anywhere, you know what I mean? So it's good to be here. Once again, like I said, we got a full vote, so everything's good. A couple of things you said on that RVs and that show, how many years have they been doing that?
We've been doing it, I think it's the third year, isn't it? Or fourth? Third.
So evidently, it must be pretty successful to keep coming back, so that's a good thing.
It is, and it requires a whole lot, you know, to put this thing together, and I think Representative Hank Zuber was working with us a number of years ago in order to really capture that, and, you know, between the pandemic and some of these things that happened that way, very successful. I mean, it's a big deal. It's a big, I think the whole South is, not these manufacturers, but it's a lot of different folks coming from different places to this conference.
Yeah, and I saw when you said the thing, you got the thing about the skyride on the beach. Is this something that you've been dealing with?
I'm sorry, say it again.
I think we got someone in the audience who dropped that off to us.
Yeah.
He'll probably say a few things a little later.
Remember, he had this about 25 years ago, sat inside of International Plaza. Oh, Keith had that.
Yeah, in Holland, yeah.
Yeah, never made it, but that was on the table once before.
I think that came from Switzerland or something, as a ski lift, and I think my cousin Crash Patello had something to do with that.
Yeah, I remember they tried for a while, just never, never got it on.
At International Plaza, you remember?
Had them all laid out there. They rusted bad enough, so they finally sold them for junk. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines.
Yeah, just nothing, just want to catch up with Walt later on. I have an issue with the infrastructure issue, and just want to catch him later on and talk about it. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman.
Do we have any new updates on the Broadwater property?
Yeah, I'll ask the Biloxi Police Department to step in, but before they do, I talked to the Codfors' family members earlier today, and they are working very, they're working south of the railroad track between there and Highway 90 right now and west of the water tower area, and they're clearing all that area. It looks really good, and we've asked them to be prepared to move north of the tracks because the problem area right now is, you go down Lawrence Street, make, or go down Tara Lane, instead of making a turn on Lawrence Street, if you turn right into the woods right there, that's a serious problem. And I know police has been out there today. You want to share with me?
We've been out there quite a bit lately, like Mr. Leonard said, but the contacts are going down quite a bit. When we go out there, we're still finding random camps as they're coming through, clearing them. We're getting with them and helping clearing them out. So, so far, it's going good. Contacts are going down.
It's definitely looking good. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. What about the Methadone Clinic? Jerry, you still on top of that?
Yes, we still are. We still go out there. There was camps on the backside of that, but a couple of months ago, most of those were cleared out. So, as most of these goes, we'll hit one area, we'll clear it, and then we kind of move on, and then we'll have another group that'll come in. So, we just, we end up
Keeping on top of that.
Cleaning through them periodically.
There's been a lot of dumping and litter around these areas, too. If we can keep an eye on top of that. I know we cleaned it up, and they go right back out there and do it, but anyway. Also,
I was going to ask some questions. How many people you have still out there, homeless?
I don't know an exact number because right now, there's trespass letters on all that property, so when we contact them, we're running them off of there. So, we clear a section, like I was saying earlier, and what we're finding is they're popping up on another section that we don't have, that is unrelated to the Broadwater, that we may not have trespass letters on. So, we kind of start the whole cycle all over again, but with them clearing that out there, that was by far the biggest patch of land that we had out there that we were dealing with and on. So, we're still, we're still have the same amount of contacts in general across the city, but as far as that property, they're going down significantly. So, alter the Broadwater. Camps are getting shut down. The stuff that's left behind is getting cleaned up eventually.
I mean, if you had no trespassing on the property, that should take care of all that property. There shouldn't be anything starting over that because that's one piece of property. There's no trespassing sign there, and I suppose it'd be there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
He's working on it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. And I just want to say, it's been brought to my attention about police dogs, and when they retire, we don't give them a last call like other cities do and have a fund for them to help take care of them. A lot of the police officers who, I guess, are their trainers or what have you, they usually take them after they retire, and then they're left with the vet bills, and if they have a family of kids and this and that, it's hard to help the dog. And since the dogs are basically our employees and heroes, we should help take care of these dogs after they retire, and we should do that last call thing. It's very, it's a nice gesture for them. So, we should look into the last call and doing a fund for them for their vet bills. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman.
Sorry, I wanted to do that in memory.
Newman, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to do that in memory of Major Garner. That was brought up in his name. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McGilvery.
Just a couple of things, Mr. President. Mayor, back in November, I requested a traffic survey for North Country Club in Pops Ferry. Is that in the works? North Country Club, Pops Ferry? You could check on that. Put it on the things-to-do list. I'm sorry. North Country Club, Pops Ferry? Okay, thank you. And as you know, the walking track was officially opened yesterday. They did a great job, and there was a lot of efforts by a lot of departments. As you very well know, Mayor, the city and the county and everything, they really stepped up and did it in a very quick manner. And walking track gets a lot of use, which everybody knows. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine, you want me to come back to you?
I have no report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Schumaker.
Just one thing tonight. The Katrina Memorial at Town Green, I had, somebody sent me some pictures recently, and I know at least on one side, the display there is broken. It looks like a bunch of rocks or something's been thrown through it. The glass is cracked and just looks bad, especially for the, you know, tourists coming down, and I know a lot of people go there, and I don't know if that's something we can look at and address.
You know, we were planning to get down, it's done, it's been, the glass, the glass is really, it's been a whole finishing process, and it just, you know, mentalism, and it needs to be, I think our idea was to revamp some of those, who would crush itself, clean wire, lighting, and pay.
And then try to move all that to the visitor center. And all that's in the works now? Okay, good deal. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had, I've been asking for years to have the fence at the north end of Balmoral repaired, and I've taken a few pictures. Hopefully, they'll be up in just a minute. So, that's the fence at the north end. Behind the tree line there is the railroad tracks, and all the vegetation was cleared off, and I appreciate that. That was done probably two or three weeks ago. Go ahead, Carrie, the next slide, but that's the next slide, please. But that's kind of what we're looking at, and the residents have been looking at, I don't know, I'm going to say for 10 years, just, you know, when it's visible before the vegetation was removed. So, can we work on this? Can we get it done? It's not an election issue, but it could be, I guess.
The service request to, to the Public Works Department after we talked yesterday, asking them to go out and investigate and see if we could repair that fence.
Thank you.
Any reason why it couldn't be stood up and reinforced?
As long as it's needed, and some of the joints along the top, it's apparent to me that somebody either backed into it or ran into it years ago, and some of the posts need to be reset, and the joints along the top rail of the fence need to be realigned. So, I mean, it's just, if you're going to repair it, that's what you have to do. If you got a new fence, that'd be terrific. It's just residents are tired of looking at it. Thank you. The next thing, we had talked about a Parks and Recreation Commission, and Peter, you were looking at doing something on a resolution toward that end, I think.
The first, we'll probably have to go back and do it fresh as a first reading to amend what's existing. That'll be on two weeks from now.
That'd be the, okay, so that'll be the next council meeting.
Eighteenth.
Okay, and Mike, just a reminder on the position vacancy report. I'd mentioned that earlier. If somebody had shoot that over to me from Human Resources for the month that
I saw it go this afternoon.
Beg your pardon?
I think I saw it go this afternoon to you.
I hadn't, if it was, if it was after 3:30, I haven't seen it yet, but if that's the case, I apologize. But anyway, I just, as long as I get it in the next day or two, I'm happy. Thank you. And I've spoken with Mr. Creel earlier about the mitigation section of the tree ordinance, and I'd like to charge a planning commission to pursue revisions in that section related to tree mitigation. I know it'll take some time. That'll involve a public hearing, if I remember correctly. So, it's, so start to finish before it gets to us is quite a few weeks. It's a number of weeks. So, I appreciate that. It's just that I feel the need. I don't know how my colleagues feel. I suspect it may be a mixed bag, but I just don't think the mitigation that we have now is adequate, particularly with some of these protected trees that are being removed. Also, I sense, and it's just a sense, my spidey sense tells me, it may be time to look at maybe a traffic study of Pass Road. We've got a lot of new things going in there in West Biloxi now on Pass Road. I know there are infrastructure concerns, and it would be great if we could spruce up the area in some form or fashion and figure out the traffic before we have new businesses come in. But, but I think, and I think Mr. Creel would agree, that the action's starting to pick up in West Biloxi, and it's, you know, going to gain some steam, so maybe, might be a good time to look at a traffic study. The, that next slide, Carrie, if you don't mind, I think Mr. Schumaker was talking about the Katrina Memorial. I'd mentioned this. Yeah, I wish that was, I wish that was me, wearing my slim fit golfing pants. But I just, I'd first mentioned we're back at Balmoral. I think we'll get there, though. That's the memorial, and maybe for the last, I first mentioned this about a year and a half ago, and I know at that time, we were looking at moving some of the stuff that was in there to different places, but I don't, but that's what all the visitors say. Comment?
You know, I talked with Sherry a number of months ago, and, you know, the plan was to remove that, revise some of the things that you don't see on, lighting at the bottom, put some lighting on the top. That whole play has, I think, it's seen its best years. Remove some of the things that are important in there that they haven't destroyed to the visitor center and a display at the visitor center.
Right.
We'll, we'll take care of that in a number of weeks.
Okie dokie. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. One last question. Are there any obstacles other than the time it takes for somebody to input the minutes of the tree committee and the AHRC minutes? Is that possible to put those online? Make them available? I mean, there's a lot of interest now generated in trees, and the tree committee beats monthly, and I know they're late getting some of their documents up there, but they don't, I don't know who, I don't know who inputs that data.
All of the agendas are online. I talked with Cecilia before the meeting. She said they've all been on there since 2018. Now, as far as the minutes go, that's something that Susan Peterson keeps up with. It's not like planning commission minutes where you have a court report or anything, but she does keep minutes of what's discussed and what is approved there at the meeting. I can ask her about that and see what she has.
And do you have some, if, if, if I were president of that committee, I can't speak for Ms. Peterson, but if it was me, I'd take notes and hand it to someone in your department who would type it up and then just post it as a PDF, you know, link to the meetings, just something for the public that, I think, just based on some of the comments I've seen and some I've had to listen to, is, I think, the assumption that unless you're sitting in a planning committee, excuse me, a tree committee meeting, most folks think they know what the tree committee does. They really don't necessarily know what the tree committee does, and they do meet, they do discuss, and it would be great if we could put that information out there so the general public knows. But that's, that's up to the administration, but I'm just thinking, it would be great to have that level of transparency.
We have a tree committee meeting tomorrow afternoon at 3:30 over at our department. Of course, the way that that committee works is that they conduct their own meeting. We're there for information purposes.
Correct.
You know, but if the mayor is okay with that, you know, we can type up the minutes if she wants to provide them to us, so.
Right. I'm just thinking that, with the exception of that it's going to take somebody's time and effort to do that, you know, it could be done. Okay, thank you, Mr. Creel. All right, that's, that concludes my report and all the questions and points I wanted to make. Thank you. We'll, we'll now move on to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for citizens' comments. If you wish to be recognized, when I ask if there's anybody who wishes to address the council, just raise your hand. I'll alternate sides of the room. When you're recognized, just come up to the table and chair here, sign in, and also state your name clearly so the clerk can record your name accurately. Be sure you're close to the mic so people can hear you, because if you're away, the people who are watching this can't, can't hear what you're saying, and people present may not be able to hear what you're saying. That being said, is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council on this side of the room? There's nobody on this side of the room. Anybody on my left, your right? Mr. DeRoche? Excuse me. I'm sorry. The gentleman behind you, Craig, do you want to come forward? I'll, I'll call on you next.
My name is Craig DeRoche. Some of you I've talked to about this over the past couple of years. It's regarding what I consider a concept and project for Biloxi called the Biloxi Beach Sky Ride. It's the same thing that's in Disney World. If you've been to Disney World, you know what I'm talking about. It's an enclosed gondola, and I do have a point of contact that I have suggested in the past that brings investors to pay for this, and he claims that not one taxpayer will be charged or have to pay for this concept and family-friendly tourist attraction. It has multiple uses and multiple things that we can use it for and how it can apply. In front of you, you've got an example of some of those things and some information, and before I leave, I'll put several pamphlets on the back and leaflets on the back table so people can have a look at that. I'm here only to say this. I sincerely ask that you continue to investigate and look into this project because it is like any other amusement ride. You can hire, the city can hire somebody to run this thing, manage it, operate it, maintain it. And for those that have a question about hurricanes, well, you know what? Disney World sees hurricanes, too, and they take them offline, and they store them until the storm has passed, and then they put them back up. There is standard safety protocol and operating procedures for this, specifically lightning, high winds. It gets shut down. Ideally, I had thought about, this would be a great concept from Ocean Springs all the way to the Silver Slipper, right? Well, that's a big bite. So, you know, they got money out there, so I started looking around, and I came in contact with a gentleman that is a professional sports arena realtor, developer, and contractor. This is what he builds. He built Charger Stadium and another one in Sacramento. This is the guy, unless we have someone locally, that we can plug in here, but you guys, I just want you to continue to kick this around and consider this seriously, Mr. Mayor, because this is something that is family-friendly oriented, and a lot of people can complain that, oh, there's nothing to do. Well, that's not true. And in another time, I will present another tourist attraction idea that I have that is unique. This is unique to the Gulf Coast, except for Florida. From Texas to the Panhandle, nobody else has this concept. Thank you very much for your
Thank you, Mr. DeRoche. Good to see you again.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Gentlemen in the first row. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm here to discuss the compensation of the city council and the mayor.
Sure. Your name, please, sir. First and last name.
I'm going to give you that. My name is William Andy Linville. What I want to show you is several things. It's not going to take 15 minutes. It'll probably take less than 10.
You have, you have three.
How many? Three?
Three minutes, yes.
That's all I got? Okay, I live in Ward 3. I work for the city. I'm a harbor master. But I also am an auditor. I work for a firm out of Colorado. I audit businesses all over the country. I audit some right here in town. I audited Ochsner's Healthcare System with a $1.4 billion payroll. I've been in hospital administration 15 years. I've owned a company that hired 5,500 employees. I know quite a bit about payroll. I have an SPHR from Senior Professionals of Human Resources. What I want you to realize is that you got the highest salaries in the state of Mississippi. South Haven is the second highest. They have $51,000 average. We've got almost $68,000 average salary for this city. What that amounts to is over $10 million a year. You're paying over $10 million a year for the highest. That's how far you are over the highest. It's not a little bit. But is it cheaper to live in South Haven? No. It's 11% higher to live in South Haven than it is in Biloxi. So, why we got the highest salary? We got the highest-paid people. You've got the highest-paid mayor in the state of Mississippi. He's paid more than the governor, and it's been that way for a long time, and the people of Biloxi have asked me to come here and expose this. They're sick and tired of it. You've got people here that get $10,000 raises every year. I work as a harbor master. I have been there three years, August. I've never missed a day. I've never been late. I've been attacked by the homeless. I've saved people from drowning, and if you hire a new harbor master, he makes the same thing I do. But we got people in City Hall making $50,000 more than the average. It's time to take a look at yourself. These salaries are like a credit card. You keep paying, and you keep paying, and it cuts out your power. $10 million over 10 years is $100 million if we let go. How can you come in here and ask for a raise when you're the highest in the state of Mississippi? You can't. It's not right. The highest city council members, I believe, is Hettisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Linville. Your three minutes are up. Is there anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, sir. your right? Yes, sir. Mr. Silvestro.
That's it?
That's it. You can come back next council meeting, two weeks from tonight, give us three more minutes if you like.
You vote no? I think I got the point across. I would have liked to say a lot more, because there's a lot of things that need to be brought out in this council meeting.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Linville. Mr. Silvestro, you know the routine. You have three minutes, sir.
How you doing? Sorry, whatever's going on, Kenny. We'll pray for you. I'd like to first thank the mayor and everybody for kind of having an open-door policy. When it's come here to do things, it's just fascinating that how nice everyone's been, really, trying to get through something. You know, we all talk about homeless people and whatever else is going on, but really, you guys have been really open, you know? And I guess tonight's meeting's about getting a raise, and the guy might know, whatever. But if you're going to compare your salaries to Mississippi, then we're always going to be Mississippi. I wish you guys made 50 grand a year and got $500,000 bonuses if you made us money. Other than that, the homeless situation, it's, things are getting, the situation is much better, but what's happening is the developers, now that the governor's building on the old lighthouse, they're going straight through to Pass Road. That's going to be developed one way or another. Mr. Elliott has bought the school property, and they're going to develop there. They cleared all the land from Irish to Veterans, probably going to be developed. So, all the homeless are now being pushed to our neighborhood in the woods. People are going to make millions of dollars. I get it. I get what the situation is. I have video of people starting fires today. Whatever they're doing, I'm not anti-homeless. We found a lot of people homes. I don't know if it's revengeful, or that's where we want to put them, but from Irish, Iris West to Tara needs to be cleaned immediately. You can't just, the policemen go in there. What do you want them to do? Drag people out? No. The methadone clinic, we should have knocked them out the minute we had. But they're all sitting there right behind the school, and I can tell you, I've been to every meeting. And the Elliotts of the world want to keep developing, whether George, you know, thinks his, their homes are garbage, whatever, but it's like $21 million is going to come right in that neighborhood. So, I'm telling you, could we please do something? And as far as infrastructure, Tara Lane is the only street light right there, and I'm telling you right now, I know enough, money's coming. So, that road, you can hardly even get down. We should look at something by that car wash, maybe doing something. But other than that, I think you all, I don't know. Thanks, and sorry, Ken, whatever's happening. Appreciate it. Thanks, Dixie.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to speak? Yes, sir.
My name's James Coleman. I just wanted to let y'all know Bob. I met with Mr. Bob back there who just spoke, and he's the real deal. For whatever it's worth, I would really be in contact with him, and he really cares about this city and really puts an effort to attend all the meetings, all the planning meetings and everything. So, he's, he's top-notch in my book. About the raises, if I got a 25% raise at work, and we all did, if we did, we'd all be doing backflips. I'm not saying that y'all don't deserve a raise. I mean, just 25% just seems excessive from what I've been hearing. I don't know for sure, but I know a mayor makes 115 a year, unlike what the other guy said at 165 or whatever. That's, I don't know where he's getting his information, but, I mean, y'all are doing a jam-up job. Y'all, y'all are great. The city has issues. I think that what Dixie brought up about the, the dogs, maybe some of that money could go towards the canines. They're heroes, you know? My wife, she takes care of her little dog, anything it ever wants, and it's not a hero. It just wants to bite me all the time. So, I think we need to take care of the, the canines. They're, they're just police officers also. But back to the homeless, I think Bob really means well, and he's been to every meeting saying, hey, I'm here, help, I'm here to help. So, it'd be, be good to see more citizens like him get involved in these kind of issues. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anybody else on my left, your right? Last call? Anybody in the back? Anybody have a comment to the council? Okie doke. That concludes council comments. We'll now move on to the policy agenda. This is a second reading. If the clerk would read the ordinance, please, excuse me, if the clerk would read item A.
Ordinance to amend the Ad Valorem Tax Exemption Program qualification for exemption.
The motion was by Mr. Glavine, and the second was by Mr. Guines. Mr. Glavine, any comments or questions?
Well, anyone from the administration when I'm talking about the Ad Valorem increase or exemption, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we, we've got a general, I guess, an abatement program in the city. If you're renovating something or a new structure, adding something to the tax rolls, we allow the developer to apply for this abatement or exemption.
Would this be for, like, what we're trying to do, they got to develop more than just one unit, correct?
Right. The, the existing statute stated, the existing ordinance said if, if a structure is residential, you can't even apply. And this was done, I think, shortly after Katrina and before we started emphasizing downtown development. So, we have been approached by, I think, at least two or three developers that want to put in at least four units, probably more, but they wanted to have the opportunity to ask for that abatement. So, we looked at the existing ordinance, and this would allow somebody to apply if the structure is in the downtown zone district and it's at least four units. So, that's, that's essentially opening up that opportunity for them to apply. It wouldn't apply just in a neighborhood or even if you did multiple units.
I, I don't have any further to add. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Guines, any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions?
No, no other.
Uh, Pedia, so you're putting homes into this now? They, they got control of what they charge for anything they want? They don't, they don't need a tax abatement. They're making a ton of money off whatever they sell. You're talking about two different worlds. You're not talking about a business that got to survive. You're talking about somebody building a home, he leaves, sucks up the money, he's gone. It's not a good thing. That's the reason we never put in there. You took care of the businesses that try to operate, you know, and it's tough for them. They don't want to make it. They need help sometime.
Yeah.
Homeowners, they make all the money and leave. You know, they don't really care.
Yeah.
I don't think they should be involved in this program.
Well, we were aware in Gulfport that they basically allowed anybody south of the tracks to, that built on the beach to apply for tax abatement. And we've never, you know, that, that wouldn't be the case here. You've got to have at least four units or build something of a condo-type nature, even though it'd be residential, that sort of project. The ultimate decision of how much of an abatement to allow, if any, would still be with the council.
Yeah, but I don't think they should be a part of that program. Normally, it's 50/50. That's what we've been doing, on the taxes in there in five years or whatever. But I mean, that's good enough for businesses. They, they got to stay open. Them guys build that stuff, they're going. They suck up $200,000, $300,000 a unit. No, I don't, I don't think, that's not right for this type of business. Restaurants, stuff like that, we had no problem. We got off, at least got off to 100% in seven years. The folk folk cut it to 50%. So, at least we got something. But those basements, like when they built a hotel, 45 million, you're getting them taxed rate for seven years, 100%. That, that's pretty strong money. But they had to stay open and make it, too. It's a big difference. Homes, I don't, I just don't believe, condominiums, anything like you're building like that should be allowed to be into this system for tax abatement. That's just my opinion.
Councilman, can I clarify something? The way I understand it, though, also, and I get the seven years up to 100%, and, and we haven't really done that, but it's on the improvements, right? Not the value of the land that's existing, they still pay all the taxes on that. It's just on the improvements that they make. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct.
That is correct. Okay. Thank you.
It still does. I mean, it's, uh...
Oh, no. I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that.
You're dealing with homes. It's different.
Yeah, well, it's...
They, they fluctuate the prices. Not us. They can charge $500,000, $100,000. It doesn't matter.
Well, we did have a downtown housing grant, and we went through that for a number of years. We set aside some money to encourage people to build downtown and live, live and work where they were going to live. You know, that, that fund is now gone, and that program is gone. So, if somebody wants to build a house or units, there's really no, there's no grant opportunity there. This would just allow for them to apply for partial abatement if they're doing, if they're in downtown and have at least four units. It's just a way to provide some incentive to get more growth downtown.
Well, the grant was $25,000.
Up to, up to $25,000.
Right, right. In fact, it was up to sometimes 15, some, but I mean, that's not, they're giving them a tax abatement. That's a big difference. If they didn't want to go back to the facade grants, or what do you want to call it? That's fine. But I mean, I just, you get involved, the way they can maximize their money. If they do something, fine. If they don't do it, it doesn't, you know, we got a ton of money that we've put out already to build stuff downtown. We did the street. We've done enough stuff to do that. And the street, they started to come in, you know? And they didn't have this program to do it by. They just came in and started building things. So, I don't think you need to pay people. They coming in and building this stuff. I mean, where else you going to build on Howard Avenue right now? You don't have too many spots. They're getting filled up pretty quick. And there's some of them, big apartments in the top, they, them building, they could put stuff in them, but I don't see why they should be giving any more than the people that have been doing this for the last several years for the city of Biloxi. I just don't agree with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines?
I have none.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilver, any questions? Mr. Schumaker? Question. This is only limited to the downtown area specified district, and how long ago, Peter, was that district delineated?
It's called the, oh, the, uh...
Well, this, was this right after Katrina? It's not been since, I mean, most of us came on the council in 2013, and it was prior to that. I think it was in the wake of Hurricane Katrina to encourage development, pretty much.
And also, it was actually put more restrictions on somebody just not walking in and getting 100% for seven years. It required more, submit your financial plan, show us, but for this abatement, the project doesn't make sense. So, we put more teeth into the application.
And who determined the, the district where you would be, within which you would be eligible for this sort of incentive? I assume it was the city?
Oh, well, the new, the new proposed is just if you have a downtown zone.
Yeah, what I'm...
Before that, it was anywhere.
So, it could be a downtown zone anywhere in the city?
Now, before that, it was anywhere, anywhere within Pass Road, Cedar Lake, if you're a business for business.
Right. You mentioned Pass Road, but I, I see Mr. Creel is chomping at the bit over here. Let me...
Originally, this tax abatement was done after Katrina or right around Katrina to help offset the building cost associated with building in the flood zone. There are a lot of people that wanted to rebuild, and there was a stretch along Highway 90, also in the downtown area, where people wanted to rebuild, but the higher elevations and everything else made it cost prohibitive. So, you know, the hotel, Hilton Garden Inn Hotel and some of those other places took advantage of this opportunity to help them offset the higher cost of flood insurance and flood construction cost. That's where this originally came from.
So, the city could, if we so desired, establish a district in West Biloxi along Pass Road. Would that be accurate? We, we just need to...
I, I think it's, if it's not residential, I think that's already in place. I mean, the, the areas where you can produce a business and apply for tax abatement are, I think, just about anywhere where it's neighborhood business or commercial business. I know if it's Cedar Lake, when the Thomaston people were coming in, I looked up there, and all that Wool Market exit in Cedar Lake are designated that a business could apply for exemption.
So, would that be accurate for businesses then or developers who want to do something along Pass Road?
Certainly.
They would be eligible for this incentive?
Typically, these tax abatements are designed, i- if you have an area, like in this case, where you're trying to encourage residential to move into an area, or, or even if it were something commercial that you were wanting to move into an area, then you would offer a tax abatement or some other type of incentive as a, as an amenity to, to try to get them to come there. In this particular case, we hear all the time that we need more living spaces, more dwelling units downtown. I don't know if you recall, but when the federal courthouse was here, we had an opportunity to get Tulane in that building, and it went all the way up until the end negotiations on that. And the reason that we wound up losing it downtown was because they announced that most of their enrollment was female, and that the female just didn't feel like there was enough of a residential element downtown to make them feel safe. So, what happened is we, we didn't lose it. I mean, it, it didn't come downtown, but they moved a smaller operation to Edgewater Village, and that's how that, that happened. But we could have had that downtown, you know, if we'd have had a, a larger residential element here, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Creel. Any other questions, comments? All right there. Being...
Yeah, I do on the...
Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Now, y'all keep talking about businesses, but you know, you're talking about homes and apartments. I have no problem with the businesses. But I mean, you don't keep talking about business. We're not talking about business. We're talking about homes. You got to pay attention to what you're saying out there. You're dealing with homes, you're going to give homeowners tax abatement. When's the last time we gave anybody a tax abatement? Do you remember, folks? When's the last time we gave somebody a tax abatement? Not for facade, the $25,000. I'm talking about tax abatement.
Hilton Garden Inn?
So, let me, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, in, in looking at my notes, item one, qualification for exemption. Item one says is required by the statute, only new renovated structures, yada, yada, yada. On item two, it says all structures used for residential purposes do not qualify for an exemption under the terms of this section. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's the existing.
Okay. And are we changing that with what we adopt tonight to include?
If you look in the substitute, it, it...
Okay. That's, that's the change then?
It adds a sentence after that.
Okay.
No residential qualifies, and it states unless such structure is, one, in a downtown zone district, and two, consists of at least four dwelling units.
Okay. So, that's, that's...
That's, that's all, that's all that's being...
Okay. That's, that's Mr. Lawrence's point then, and that's, that's what the change was then in the substitute.
Yes.
Okay. That's, I missed that. Okay.
And that's adding the residential to that, correct?
Right, correct. So, we have not done residential abatements. I think it's Mr. Lawrence's point. I can't think of any...
That's right. No, no, it's, it's not been allowed, but I mean, that is, that is what is being proposed that in downtown, that we allow somebody to apply under certain conditions.
Right.
If they want to bring homes in.
So, what is, all right, and it's not just the downtown district, though?
This, this is just the downtown district.
This is just the downtown district, which runs roughly from where to where? I'm sorry to...
Uh, roughly to the community development office.
Right.
To, uh...
Does it go all the way to Porter?
Porter Avenue, and...
Okay. And it's from what? Beach Boulevard to Division Street or somewhere thereabouts?
No, you got houses all, I mean, it's essentially the corridor of, of West Howard to Porter. And then, it's essentially West Howard, and I think when you get around the stadium, it's, it's basically the entire what's downtown, like over towards the Hilton Garden Inn.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Lawrence, okay, I think, Mr. Lawrence's point is we've never done residential, now we're including residential.
That, that is the point. That's, that's what the amendment is.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's, that's good, all right.
Downtown district goes to Gil. That way you had to take in Porter.
Okay.
So the downtown goes to Gil.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented? All opposed? It's, it's approved on a five-two vote? Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Lawrence in opposition for the clerk. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Ordinance emitting salary and compensation of mayor and council members.
All right, uh, well, I'm, I'm, it's a second reading. I made the motion.
Oh.
And Mr. Lawrence seconded that, uh, but I'll reserve my comment. Mr. Lawrence, you may comment at this time and I'll comment a little later.
Yeah, I know they've been kicking around different numbers and everybody says, uh, you don't deserve any more money, you're hired in, whatever it was. Well, I've been here six terms. How much we, they changed the salary for the council? Two percent. Twenty-four years. You know, we paid the price for eggs and everything else, just like anybody else. But the council increased it the second time I was elected in the oh-five with two percent. It's the only time it ever changed. So with the number you need to do now, that's something you need to look at. But I think definitely, this should be an increase. And I never know you made more than the governor. I ain't never heard that one before. The governor makes more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, I tell you that. But I'm just saying, it's something you need to look at and come up with the appropriate number, you know, so. That's what I'm, I'm giving it back and I know Kenny had worked on some of these things, he had a different reason to do them. But I think there definitely should be some kind of change. You hired and give all director two tons of money, just for two tons of money and yet this board here fights this every day and yet we've never changed anything in twenty-four years. And really, since they've been there, none. Now, the two new ones, they, they just got in, so they don't have no clue about it's been. But anyway, I just think it's something, you look at a number that you could put on it or percentage, whatever you think. I think it needs, it needs to be adjusted. There's no doubt about that part. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Glavine, next, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, when this came up, we tabled the original, um, uh, original ordinance that we were considering. And I, I committed that I would do some research. It was a little tough doing the research, a couple of reasons. Uh, the closest city to compare us to, obviously, is Gulfport. Like Mr. Lawrence said, it's been seventeen years since, uh, the council pay has been increased. Gulfport was just three and a half years ago. Reason it was difficult to find the ac- actual amount that they were being compensated is because their ordinance was rewritten in twenty-twenty-one and it says the council pay is three-quarters of what a Harrison County supervisor makes. So then I had to go try to find what a Harrison County tourism, I mean, uh, Harrison County supervisor makes. And, uh, that was a little difficult pulling that a little bit and I finally got that number. I believe it, um, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's around fifty-six thousand. So, uh, at least we got this ordinance on the agenda. A lot of people are saying, well, you're doing it after the qualifying. Well, we did it a day before the qualifying, but we did get it in there for at least, uh, to have some transparency. And speaking of transparency, yeah, I could have presented something today and said, hey, we'll set our pay three-quarters of what the supervisors make. Um, Gulfport has that, so every time the supervisor's pay increases, guess what? Gulfport doesn't have to publish anything. Uh, we didn't do that today. We put a number on here. Uh, so it would be in the eyes of public scrutiny in the future if we decided to increase this number, despite if a supervisor pay or a governor's pay went up, we didn't tie it to an index. We just said, it's been seventeen years. We looked at a competing city that has a similar budget, they're a little bit bigger in population and came up with the, uh, number of forty thousand, which is five percent lower than what, uh, we're still five percent lower than what they make. And if the supervisor pay increases this July, guess what? Gulfport is gonna be even more higher than a Biloxi City Councilman. So and even, you know, saying who's gonna be higher or lower or whatever, at the end of the day, the public's gonna decide who sits in these seats, whether we make forty thousand or thirty thousand. Um, y'all gonna decide that. Are you getting, uh, the bang for your buck? But we wanted to set this, uh, at least fair as it compares with another city. Um, let's see. And I, I mean, I, I can't be any more transparent to that. That's the logic, uh, behind this. Now, I think the, uh, mayor's salary, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong on this, it's set to like two-point-nine-five percent or two-point-nine-five times what a supervisor make or, or what's it tied to? Do you recall?
No, I, I think it's just, um, looking at seventeen years and just doing like a little bit less than two percent a year. It's just a roughly twenty-seven percent.
All right, so if I understand, the mayor of Gulfport, the compensation's around one-sixty, one-sixty or something like that. We looked at our mayor's pay, it was one-fifteen. Uh, again, this is just me putting this proposal out tonight, you know, and its final form is gonna de- determine uh, how we discuss it tonight and, uh, what the consensus is. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Glavine, for your comments. Mr. Gines?
Yeah, I think Kenny done an excellent job. Um, just like I said, less than two percent a year over the last seventeen years is a, I believe is an excellent number. I look at what a lot of the council members go through. Uh, just like myself, a couple of years ago when we had an infrastructure issue, you know, I went through, um, a, a full vehicle uh, riding around, um, lost the vehicle because of, uh, all the infrastructure work. So this job could, could become very hectic. Um, I'm living proof of that. You know, the city didn't purchase me a new van, you know, or anything like that, but uh, just a little small compensation of a percent and a half is more than acceptable. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Hello? It feels weird talking about like my own pay, but, um, in all reality, I might be, um, talking about the new person's pay, so. Um, it's just, it's weird anyway, but all I can say is, um, I've been back and forth on it. Um, but for the first eight years that I was in office, I literally spent my full-time, I made this my full-time job. I did not take any other income whatsoever. It freed me up to do a lot and get a lot done, like Hiller Park. Um, but at the same time, I wasn't bringing a lot in and thankfully I had help. So when I'm considering someone else taking my position, I would like to see, you know, us entice more, um, leaders, true leaders and people that can actually spend more time in the community and do things like that. And so we need to look at, um, what's gonna entice true leadership that actually loves Biloxi and that can fill up some of their time to give back to the community. That's what I'm looking for.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Mr. McGilvery?
Just two points. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first off, no, the pay increase wouldn't affect myself, um, nor, um, Councilman Shoemaker, since we're state, um, employee retired. Um, I've given this a lot of thought as well. Um, I, I do know during the budget hearing, uh, all the council members, um, along with the administration, worked very hard to get the city employees, most of them, a five percent pay increase. I thought it was, was good. There was a lot of energy put towards that and, uh, I felt very good when that five percent, um, was approved. It's, I think the dates have been mentioned by my fellow council members regarding, uh, there's been no pay increase. Uh, my research shows that the last one for, uh, the mayor and city council was in twenty-oh-nine. Nothing's take place, has taken place since then. Be my thought, my suggestion, that, uh, five percent, uh, would be fair. And in addition to that, annually, each year thereafter, start somewhere around a one-point-five, um, in the budget. Something we discuss, could discuss, I guess, in this upcoming budget workshops. That way there, the employees, all the city employees would, would know that, uh, even if there's not a cross-the-board pay raise, at least they would have some type of, uh, annual, um, percentage, one-point-five, I think would be good, maybe two percent, something we could discuss. And that way there, I don't think we would end up back in the situation that we are here today. So that's my suggestion, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker, any comments?
Yes, I have a few. Uh, let me just start out by saying, I appreciate Mr. Linville speaking earlier and citizen comments. However, I just wanna, I want everyone to know that some of what he said was absolutely not accurate when it came to pay numbers and some of the employees. I don't know where that information came from, but again, it is not accurate. We are not the highest paid, nor is the mayor in the state, for what that's worth. I just wanted to throw that out there. Now regarding the pay raise, I too have thought a lot about this. Do I think the council needs a pay raise? Absolutely. It's been since two thousand and eight. I don't know of many other places that hadn't gotten a pay raise since then. I don't think that's too much to ask. However, that being said, and absolutely, this is not gonna be popular with these guys up here or the mayor. I just feel, right now, with the things we need done in the city, the money we don't have to fix potholes and paving streets and fixing ditches, I just can't see us getting a pay raise and the mayor getting a pay raise of that amount right now with the things that we need and don't have and can't get with money. I certainly feel we need one. Unfortunately, I just can't support that now. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I'd just like to make a couple of observations. I, I had, I had asked, uh, posed the question and the administration was kind enough to get me this information. How many city employees do we have that earn forty thousand dollars or less? There are a hundred and eighty-three employees that earn less than, uh, forty thousand dollars a year. I also did a little research and just, uh, bear with me. In two thousand and one, the mayor made seventy-four thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, the council made nineteen thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. In two thousand and two, the mayor at the time got a fifteen-point-four percent raise and the council got a thirteen-and-a-half percent raise. So the mayor's salary went up to eighty-six thousand in two thousand and two and the council went to twenty-two thousand. For the next two years, two thousand and three and two thousand and four, the increase for each of those years was three-and-a-half percent, as well as two thousand and five. In two thousand and six, the raise was five percent, as it was in two thousand and seven, eight and nine. Then there was a proposal in two thousand and seventeen for, uh, here before the council for, for a, a pay increase and, uh, it failed. And then there was another one, another proposal before the council in two thousand and twenty-one for a pay raise for the mayor and council. At that time, the mayor's salary would have been raised to a hundred and seventeen thousand and the council's salary would have been raised to thirty-two thousand, but it failed on both occasions. So that, that brings us where we are today. The other thing is, we were able to give employees a five percent raise this past year and a- as I've mentioned it for a number of years in the past, I would love to see us go to a grade step uh, compensation schedule again with an annual increase for all employees of between one-and-a-half percent and two percent. And then I ran the numbers from two thousand and nine to, uh, the current year and as, I think it was Mr. Abyad said, and that was accurate. If the, if the, the salaries for the, the mayor and the council had gone up two percent a year, council would be pretty close to what's, what's being proposed tonight um, to be approved and the mayor's salary would, would have been a little higher. But also, I, I was looking at the idea of maybe for this next term, rather than set it at what's being proposed for each of the next four years, that you might look at, uh, a variable annual increase. Maybe the, there's four years in a term. Of course, this first year, maybe it's ten percent, five percent, whatever. And then, uh, but let, let's, because I was playing with some numbers here, let's say year one, there's a ten percent pay increase. Year two, there's a six percent. Year three, there's a four percent. In year four, there's a two percent increase. That's graduated. But then I, I go back to what we're doing for the employee, what we've tried to do for the employees, what we're trying to do for the employees. And, you know, is one-and-a-half percent sustainable every year for an annual increase for every employee? And I, I think it is, I don't, it may be two percent, but I think it's, I think that's gonna be the sweet spot. Again, we're having a compensation study done. We should get those results in March for the employees and we could, I think we could address that at this time. Um, but I, I'm, I just think that these increases are too large. I'm willing to look at something significantly less or something that's graduated. So we've got a, a number of different opinions up here and thoughts and ideas and, uh, if there's anybody that wants to offer a motion, I'll try and keep track of all these motions and seconds and, because it may get interesting here. The clerk will keep me straight.
I'd just like to say something.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
I don't know where you got all these numbers from. Nothing was done in oh-eight, oh-nine. The salary's been twenty-nine thousand dollars since the last five turns I've been in office. Before that, it was twenty-eight thousand. So I don't know where you got nineteen and twenty-two and all these changes. It never did change. And the mayor, they did that one time, I was AJ, was the mayor, and they changed his because it was pretty low for a mayor of this city. And they adjusted that for him, but we didn't get anything to do with it. Our salary's been twenty-nine thousand. Since y'all been in office, it's twenty-nine thousand.
Since two, since two thousand and nine.
Right.
That's correct.
But that's, that's still the same thing it was in two thousand and five. It was twenty-nine thousand. That's when they moved it to that, to two percent. So I don't, hey, you got all these different prices from them. I've been here twenty-four years. I'm telling you, we got two percent raise the second time and that was it. So them numbers you got, I don't know where you got them from.
I'll have to check my sources again.
I'm telling you from a fact.
Okay.
I get the check. I don't know who your sources are.
I believe you.
Y'all get the check.
I believe you.
Okay.
Uh, we'll go down, see if there are more comments. Mr. Gines, anything?
Yes, I agree with George. I also agree with Kenny. Um, uh, like I said, um, he's the grandfather. He knows best. I'm going with grandpa.
All right, Ms. Newman, any other comments? Nothing. Mr. McGilvery, anything or?
Comment.
All right. Kenny, anything?
Um, man, I understand how, you know, this looks. I understand, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to do it, or we've been doing it traditionally every four years and it falls on an election year because it can be used for political fodder and that's kinda unfair too. And like I said earlier, I stand by the comment. If, if we don't do a good job up here, we're not gonna be, and I don't care how much they pay us, a hundred thousand, we're not gonna be up here long. And, um, I, I hope our commitment, and I know it is, I've seen everybody work on this council, the ones that have been here previously, the ones that are currently on this council, and I'm sure the ones that'll be here in the future. And I hope they can, uh, continue that commitment for their words and the citizens of Biloxi. All I was charged with was to do a comparison. I did that. And I aligned it and it, it, if it looks like it's a too skewed, it gets kinda balanced out with who we're competing with. And do I work as hard as a Gulfport, my Gulfport counterparts? I guarantee you I do. Biloxi works harder than any city, including Gulfport and others. And I, I'm sorry for my friends over there, but I know we do. I know how hard we work. And, and does the city employees work hard? By damn, they do. And we've worked on that tirelessly this year to get that increase in place. And we have increased in years pl- increased in years past. But exponentially, when you say 2% per year equals, for 17 years, equals 34% or whatever it is, it's even more than that, because you got to take the 2% increase, and then if you didn't get one on, on that year, it's actually, if you go look at the figure, it's actually closer to 75% if you want to know the true inflation number that it comes out as when you don't get an increase every year. And we feel the pain of, of our employees when they tell us, I haven't had a raise or I haven't had a 5%, 3%, you know, whatever it is. But we've been working on these raises, and I know I'm drifting back to our employees, but they're important. We've been working on those. We've given increases in compensation, not just this year, the 5% this year. There have been some in subsequent years, and we've been doing our best with that. So I would like for us to vote on the original, and then if anybody has an alternative, then we go from there. That's fair.
Mr. Shoemaker, any comments?
I don't have anything else.
Okeydoke. Any, Mr. Glavine has requested that we vote on the proposal. If it doesn't pass, then we'll, we'll look at amendments in that case. Is everybody comfortable with that?
The question, does this have to be passed tonight?
Yes.
Yeah. As I recall, the last time we had this discussion, when this came up on the agenda in December, it had to be approved at least 90 days before the general election, which is June 4th? June 3rd or 4th, that first Tuesday in June, I think. So, yeah, we've got to get this. It doesn't have to be tonight, I don't think, but it would definitely have to be.
The problem is, if it doesn't pass unanimous, it changes, the ordinance changes on when it goes to an effect, and then that changes the date requirement.
That's correct, yeah.
So that's the pickle.
That's right. Whether it's passed unanimously or not, good catch, Mr. Glavine.
Definitely not going to pass unanimously. You already figured that out. I ain't going to figure that one out.
But listen, we'll put some, if this doesn't work, we'll put some alternatives. If that doesn't work, it doesn't pass. That's all.
That's it. All. You good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Mr. Glavine, you'd like to call for the question? Is that correct?
I'd like to call for the question and reserve if it is not successful, that they, they allow the floor to present alternatives.
Sure. That, that would be fine. All right. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? It's approved on a 4-3 vote? Thank you. Um... Let's see. Thank you. The clerk got the vote on that. It was a 4-3 vote. Opposition, Mr. Shoemaker, Tisdale McGilvery. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the next item. If the clerk would read item C.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat for a 27-lock commercial subdivision development for property located at 458 Back Bay Boulevard.
Thank you. Mr. Glavine made the motion. The second was by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine.
Okay. I'll defer to the councilman in this ward if he would like the floor.
I would. The major problem I had with this thing is when we thought calling these sheds condominiums, you can't do that. That's a multi-family home condominium. Jerry, you can't be circumventing all these things. This is what the law states. This is the laws in LDO. You want to break the laws, then that's up y'all. You cannot call a garage a condominium. Condominiums are multi-family homes. So that's the first thing. And the first thing it says in this ordinance is right here. We use for boats and RVs, condos. It's not condos.
This is, these units are not being, will not be used for living purposes. If you go out there and look at them, let me back up. From the day that Mr. Carter came in with his designer, they told us what they wanted to do. They wanted to build these to sell them. So nothing has changed. Their, their original idea has been the same from the beginning. This is storage warehouses, individual storage warehouses. They have no living quarters in them whatsoever. I've gone out there and looked at them. It's a warehouse from India, and they're about 20 feet wide and 50 to 60 feet deep. The only thing they have inside of them is an electrical panel. Each one has an individual electrical panel. It has an individual meter on it, and it has room in there to park an RV and a boat and maybe a car if necessary, but absolutely no living quarters. They came through, they went through the planning commission with this PDI. They had to do the PDI because the lot sizes for these units are smaller than anything that we allow. The zoning was correct for what they wanted to do, but they did the PDI just to address the lot sizes. They came through the planning commission, had a public hearing. They came through the city council. They got approval for the PDI. The planning commission approved it 11-0. I can't remember what the vote was here, but they got approval. And based on that approval from the council, they went back and did the subdivision the way that it was approved. They've built this thing. And now they're winding down. They have just a little bit left to do, and they're asking for the final plat to be approved so that they can sell these units. They have people lined up, ready to, to buy these units. The, the word condo in there, I think, might create the impression that there's going to be living quarters in there, but I'm telling you, there are no living quarters in these places. All it is, is individual warehouses next to each other that are designed to store boats and RVs.
Jerry, could I, could I make a suggestion? I mean, the council's going to approve this plat, and this plat has notes and things on it. And my suggestion is to accommodate Mr. Lawrence's concern is the council could pass this with the understanding that this note will be added to the, to the plat to state, "These units shall not be allowed as residential units or as living quarters," making that clear on the plat that's going to be filed at the courthouse.
Okay. When you do that, then you can't subdivide garages.
I talked to David Wheeler today. I think most of y'all know David Wheeler, very respected land attorney. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing anything. I went over this with him. I said, "Are you aware of anything in the law that would prevent this from happening?" And he said, "Absolutely not." He said it happens all the time, so.
Well, you got a couple of things. I don't know what y'all looking at. The PDI don't allow them, the PDI don't even list that you can have storage units in it. We didn't allow it. According to y'all chart that you had, that I got it from y'all, you came and put a storage in a PDI.
The PDI, the uses, the uses and the dimensions are addressed in a PDI as a whole. When you prove a PDI, you're approving the uses. In other words, they present a whole package to you. And when you vote, when the planning commission votes and when the city council votes, you're approving that package as a whole, or you're denying that package as a whole. And so what they did is they presented this to you, and y'all voted to approve it. So now that they're this close to being finished, you know, and like I've told y'all before, the only difference that this makes, the only difference this makes is whether or not they can sell the individual units or whether they can rent them out. Whether they rent them out or whether they sell them, they're still going to be used for the same purpose. So it's, I, I'm not sure where the confusion is coming in.
There's no confusion, Jerry. You can't sell them. No confusion. And according to our rules and regulations, if they don't mean anything, then they need to tell us. Because right here, PDI does not allow boat storage units. Right here. This is y'all's chart. I mean, I didn't make none of this stuff up. So if you're going to do what you want, you can't sell them. If he wants to rent them, fine. Nobody has a problem with that. He has a right to do that. He can do that with the waterfront. You know, so I don't know why we changed it from the waterfront to the PDI anyway. I mean, you can, if he can rent them, fine. He got that many people wanting to buy them, fine. All this is, is to set up to make the maximum amount of money for him. And nothing to do with the city where they rent them or sell them. We don't gain nothing one way or the other, other than us breaking our own laws to justify something for him to make more money in it.
We, we do benefit from this, because we'll make individual taxes off of each lot that he sells in there as opposed to one overall lot being used for rental. The city does benefit from this.
They're not going to change a nickel one way or the other. The money going to come in from the rentals, the money going to come in from the sale. So it doesn't really matter. But you cannot, you cannot set this up according to our, the land use ordinance we have to do.
That's not correct, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, well, I do. And that's what you always say, when you and I get to this point. The thing is, we cannot do this legally without changing something. Otherwise, and I try to tell you, I'm not, hey, y'all want to break the laws on that? You go get indicted, go to jail. That's up y'all. I'm not doing it. And right now, you're just making up rules and regulations to verify something somebody else. We already did it three or four times. You know, we did it with the Camden, uh, Kenny Ward. It was up on Front Beach, five, five resolutions, two years. Still couldn't say what was built there. I mean, so these things, you adjust them, where it's in, don't be condominium. It means condominium when you can separate it. They're not condominiums, and you know that. And I'm not saying PDA needs to rewrite this thing. I'm not really sure. And I tell y'all, do it right the first time, and don't be, don't be asking others to break laws.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence. Can we, can I allow Mr. McGilvery to comment? He's the one who's seconded. Thank you. Go ahead, Ron.
The only thing I got to say is, I remember the conversation the last time when it came about, and I think it's a win-win project down there on Back Bay, and I have no issue one way or the other. I'm, I'm for this project.
All right. Mr. Glavine, do you want to comment now, or there may be others with comments?
I'm okay right now.
Okay. Mr. Guines, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of little questions. And selling them individually gives us extra revenue?
Yes. My guess would be is that they'll be evaluated as, as individual units. You know, it's just like a, a single-family subdivision. You take a big piece of agricultural property, we're making minimal taxes off of that. But when you subdivide it up into individual units, then when that plat is filed, we start getting individual taxes on each of those individual lots. And this is going to work the same way. Each of these, these units will have a different owner, or maybe some people will buy more than one, but it'll have individual owner, and we'll get individual taxes off of each unit.
Each one. And the other thing is, how did the planning commission vote?
11 to 0.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Newman, any comments? Mr. Shoemaker, any comments?
I do, just one. Peter, you as the city attorney that represents the city, are there any issues? Are we breaking any laws, in your opinion, if we approve this?
Boat storage is allowed in the PDI. The council's already ruled that this is a PDI, so.
So you feel that we're good if we approve this?
Yeah, if there's any uncertainty about somebody moving to these units, you could add that to the note, to the plat.
Right.
And let me just remind you, Councilman Shoemaker, the underlying zoning on this property is waterfront, which does allow boat storage and RV storage.
Right, right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The question is, then this needs to be changed in LDO, because right here it states simply, "From Jerry Creel, boat stores are not allowed in PDI's." Right there. Zero. Boat stores are allowed in waterfront.
Mr. Lawrence, can I make a few comments?
Sure.
If that's all, okay.
I'm just saying, I'm saying we're not breaking the law. There it is. That's the first one.
I understand. We'll cover that point again, I believe. All right. So I think I want to, I was trying to look at this and research this, and, and voted to approve it the first go-around. Mr. Lawrence was the only one who opposed it, but I went back and did some research based on what he said, and so I'm going to try and keep this simple so I can understand it, because he gets interesting. So waterfront zoning is a non-residential base zoning district? Would that, would that be accurate?
Well, it, it could allow condos. In other words, living condos.
Correct.
So.
It, it could create su, one of the, I guess, standards. It could create suitable environment for various types of mixed-use development, where a business, office, retail, and residential uses are designed and integrated in compatible ways. So you could have condos or mixed-use in waterfront?
Yes, sir. It could.
Okay. So my, my second point, and this goes to, I think, the core of Mr. Lawrence's point, is that in, in looking at the PDI, it's referred to as Table 23-4, 23-4-1C, Use Table, Non-Residential and Plan Development Districts. And it, it runs a number of, a number of pages, probably a dozen pages. And they have a use category, and they note whether, based on the commercial zone or plan development district, what's allowed and what's not allowed. And it's, it says, it says basically if there's, and it's set up in a column.
Yes, sir.
So, and I know you know this, Jerry. And if it doesn't, if it has a P, it means it's a permitted use in that zoning. If it's a C, it's a conditional use, which the council has to act on. If it's an A, it's allowed to a plan, development master plan. But if it's a blank cell, it says it's a prohibited use. And as you, as you go through this, when you come to PDI, it refers to warehouse and storage, and no warehousing or storage is permitted in a PDI, according to this use table. That would be accurate, based on what the table.
If it, if it doesn't show it on the table there, but the, the...
Then, then, hang on. Bear with me. It's prohibited, but if I understood correctly what Mr. Abid said, because we approved the initial plat, then this makes this now permissible. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So if, if the council had not voted to approve it, then my thinking is, Mr. Lawrence's argument would, would hold water, but because the council approved it earlier for an initial plat, then they have, in effect, approved this use that used to not be permissible. Would that be accurate?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So my, so my next question is, so that's the significance of initial plats, and that was the dilemma I was dealing with. I voted to approve this, and then looking and doing my research, I find what Mr. Lawrence says, and gee, it's not permitted, but based on the fact that the initial plat was approved, that's how this boat storage became permissible?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
This is, this concept is a novel concept, and by that, I mean that there's no other development like this in the city.
This is the first one.
This is the first of its kind. So, so then there are implications for, for what, what occurs in the future.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So that would, so if, if a similar issue presents itself for an initial, approval of an initial plat, then basically whatever's in that initial plat, if it's approved, that can go in that development. We've already approved that.
Yes, sir.
So I have just a couple of other questions, so bear, please bear with me. The difference between this and, say, Pelican Point Marina, which is a dry storage by the old hookup restaurant, right? That's a dry boat storage.
Yes, sir.
So if that owner said, "This is a great idea. I want to do the same thing. I'll just, because these boats are raised and lowered and just shoved in a little slot, as long, I could put up a partition between every other slot or each individual slot, then could I try and do the same thing that's being done here, and that is then sell those slots if you would in this dry storage, or no, I can't?" Just a yes or a no? I'm curious.
A person can always apply to do something like that, but they have to go through the process to get it done. It's not something I could approve arbitrarily.
Exactly. It has to, it has to come to the council.
That's correct.
Okay. So it, it is possible. So some things are possible that may appear to be not likely or even not permissible, but once the council, in some instances, approves something like an initial plat, then some then some things that usually don't occur can occur. That'd be fair to say. All right, what's, let's say folks that own storage units. Mr. Abid owns forty storage units on Pass Road. You drive in, you have a key, you hit the key, you code it, you enter the, the code, you go in, you roll up your thing, you shove your stuff, you're getting out of your house into a storage unit, and close it and leave. Could Mr. Abid do something similar if that were his storage unit? He, from what you just said, I could, I would assume that you could do that. If you, if you've got a, well, there's a lot of questions in there that's not answered. What is the zoning on the property that Mr. Abid owns? Is this something that's grandfathered in? You know, there's all kinds of things that we have to look at before we consider something like that. Fair, fair answer. Can I build, uh, if I, if I have a lot, and all I wanna do is build two units to store my boat and Mr. Lawrence's boat, that you never hear anything about, but I'm sure he's got a boat? We each are gonna store our, our boats in this two-unit development or whatever. Could we do the same thing that's being done here? I mean, there's no primary structure. This wouldn't be an auxiliary structure or an ancillary structure. Again, it would depend on the zoning of the property and the size of the property as to whether or not you could do that. If the, the PD, the PDI here, you know, the difference between the things that you've brought up is the fact that the property, the dry dock storage down there on the point is zoned waterfront, where a boat storage warehouse is allowed in waterfront zoning. The, the two tenant or the two space, one that you're talking about. Not likely to occur. Yeah, we just, we'd have to look at the conditions that you're presenting, you know? Okay, and, and that, that's a fair answer. And you did say that something could be included on the plat. I think Mr. Abid said. Language could, yes, sir. That basically would prohibit any residential use. Is this chair, that is just there to store your RV or your boat or jet ski? And pretty much that's it? Yes, sir. Okay. All right, thank you. Last comment? Mr. Lawrence?
So we broke the law the first time. It's okay, we vote for it again and break the law again. Because you broke the law the first time. According to the LDO, we did not vote the law. We did not support the law that the city has. And you passed something that was actually illegal. Or you broke the law, whatever you wanna call it. That's all, that's another point I'm trying to get to y'all. We supposed to be doing, we represent the legislative body of this. We, we set the law. We can change the law anytime we want. But we don't should, we shouldn't be breaking any of them. And flopping anything back around, this and that, that's just mass confusion for everybody. But I mean, you still broke the law, and you called them condominium and put it in there. And it can't be, Peter wants to write that in, that's fine. They have no water in sewer.
That's correct.
They can't, they can't be ever used as condominium. They're garages. That's it. So I mean, you voted in again, which y'all probably will, but you breaking the law again.
I can see if Kenny's out there. Thank you. If he would, he wants to vote on this thing. He's not on the phone. He's on the phone. Let him stay on the phone. Give us just a minute here. All right, we'll, we'll call for the question. On, uh, this is item 4C. Call for the question on 4C. All in favor of the resolution as presented? All opposed? It's approved on a 5-2 vote. Mr. Lawrence and myself in opposition. Thank you. That brings us to item D. This was a, in addition to the agenda when we amended it. If the clerk would read item D, please.
Resolution in opposition of Senate Bill Number 2381 and House Bill Number 1480 in its present form, which would redefine legal gaming sites and potentially invalidate existing leases and agreements with the city.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Glavine.
A second.
And a second by Mr. Lawrence. Peter, if you would, could you give us a, just kinda give us a synopsis? I don't know if everybody had, had time to read it before the meeting started, but go ahead and lay it out for us if, if you would.
You know, it's history repeating itself from last year. If you remember, uh, the Senate and House attempted to pass legislation to sort of change definitions of what, what are legal gaming sites. And that did not pass last year. So it, it's back again, a little more streamlined, not necessarily focusing as much on the Secretary of State controlling the harbors and trying to take over ports and harbors. But, but basically just redefining what a legal gaming site would be. And this is gonna express our opposition to the bill. I think Long Beach is in the same boat. Our primary thrust to this is we have three existing lease agreements right now. RW, Tullis, and Tevely, all of which have applied through the Gaming Commission. Two have been approved by the Gaming Commission. Tevely is still under consideration. And since those approvals, the Secretary of State and the Mississippi Gaming and Hospitality Association have opposed these projects, making objections to the Gaming Commission and appealing the Gaming Commission's approval. The Secretary of State has filed two new lawsuits this year challenging who owns the property. And our issue is these, these laws being proposed are very close. In fact, in some cases mirror what the arguments are in court. And we don't think a bill should be passed to, to try to give one side or the other consideration in a current lawsuit. So I mean, the, the remedy would be that if they wanna change the definition of a, a gaming site, you know, which is, may or may not stifle competition. If they wanna do that, it shouldn't take place until after July. And it shouldn't affect anybody who's, who's got site approval or trying to get site approval from the Gaming Commission. The House bill also, just looking at that today, it may impact the city's existing lease with the Golden Nugget. So we need to dig into all this a little more. But if we do nothing, they're gonna say, well, they were fine with it, so.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. Abid. Appreciate that. Mr. Glavine, comment?
I was at that Gaming Commission hearing, and the Mississippi Hospitality and Gaming Association provided a brief, which was about fifteen hundred pages long. That, that's a pretty long brief. And so that kinda delayed them. They thought it would be err on the side of caution to at least go through that brief or documents that they were providing just in case there wasn't any hand grenades in there, I guess. So, anyway, I think it's in our best interest to oppose this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence?
Peter, what did, what did they, Secretary of State deny us on? What did they use to deny these things?
He, he just said, "This isn't a proper site." And, you know, the day before the Tullis came before the Gaming Commission, he filed a lawsuit against the Tullis, saying they don't own the property. And he's correct, because we own the property. But he's saying they don't have the right to do a lease with us, and just challenging the whole ownership issue. The Tevely came before the Gaming Commission, and then the day before, they came to the Gaming Commission. He filed another suit against the Tevely folks. So, you know, this was done. They, they were planning to get this bill forward. It could be viewed as just trying to stall and delay them and trying to get this bill through. And try to invalidate all their existing efforts and the money they put in and try to invalidate existing leases. We, we, you know.
So the, the Tullis was because the city owned the property. What was the old VFW property that was owned by, another group owns that, that thirty acres? And they have the P's and everything in front of that, yet they denied that one. That one didn't make sense to me.
They, they're waiting on their decision from the Gaming Commission. They put their, they put their arguments forward, and the Gaming Commission will probably, we think they'll probably decide this month.
And all Debbie has, they rode and everything runs through the water. I mean, you can see what he's either connected to the water more than in the, the Tullis, really. And yet the Tullis approved. That didn't make sense. Now, why you say it's gonna affect the lease money we have with the?
Well, what, you, you mean, these bills are online. If you look at the bills, the bills say things like, "It's illegal, it's illegal for a city to have a lease of any type or provide any type of access to a gaming operation." So it's different if they say, "Hey, next year, the city can't do this." But the way it reads right now is, everything we've, we've done could be viewed as, as against the law, if they pass this law.
Basically, I think they're, you know, the decisions that have been made in the lower courts and the higher court, you know, 0 for 6. And they want, they don't, don't like the, the way that it sits now. And they wanna do, uh, change the, move the goalpost. And I think that's, in a nutshell. So it's, it's in our best interest, the city's best interest, the long-term development that could possibly, you know, bring a significant amount, in the billions, of, of new construction and new, and new tourism as well as gaming revenue. It's in our best interest to, to make sure this goes forward. So for, for Biloxi is what we're asking. And we're gonna fight very hard again.
Yeah, I mean, just like the Secretary of State's supposed to be promoting the state. And you know about them three units, you talking about six, seven thousand people gonna work. It's hard to believe that you would be Secretary of State and you'd fight something like that.
We could see as, as many as two thousand hotel rooms as a result of the projects that are in motion now. And that's what we wanna make sure. But those, and as Peter said, whenever the bill is signed and passed, and maybe in the July timeframe, anything that's in, in, in the process now, which we've been in the process, you know, as far as the Tevely, it's been in, how many times have we, since seventeen? So it's only fair, it's only reasonable. But that doesn't, you know, count for much when it comes up in, in your Biloxi and some of the things that we're faced with in Jackson. I mean, we, we fight every day. You know, our, our lobbyists and the people that represent us are fighting this, uh, this action by folks who haven't, don't have our best interest, Biloxi's best interest at heart. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
All right. Mr. Gans, any comments?
I have no comments. Peter said it all.
All right. Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery? I have none. Mr. Glavine, Mr. Shoemaker? All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the resolution as presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Was that Mr. Lawrence? Okay, a motion by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Gans, uh, seconded that. Okay. We've got a few items. Any questions, Mr. Lawrence?
No, I think that's a pretty simple one there.
Yeah, I thought this would be a short meeting, too. Go ahead, Mr. Gans, anything?
Nothing.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery? Mr. Glavine? And I have nothing. All right, all in favor of the consent agenda is presented? It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. Any exceptions? Excuse me, a seven, 7-0 vote. Man, people gonna think I went to Mississippi State. All right. All right, that brings us to the code enforcement hearing. Mr. Creel? Yes, sir. What we're gonna ask for on item A, B, and C, we had asked for thirty-day extensions on all of those. Because of the snow that happened, we weren't able to meet the advertising requirements. So it, it just threw us back. And we have to meet those before we can present them to the council.
I move that we do the second.
All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. And a second by Mr. Gans. Oh, so there's advertising deadline. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor of thirty-day extensions? For all three. Excuse me, for all three. That's correct. Uh, so that's approved on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to the routine agenda. We're so glad Mr. Lawrence is back because nobody has asked Mr. Rhodey a question since Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, I'm surprised he even here.
He, he's, he's playing the odds. He figured you might be.
That thing getting bad, don't have a tie in his thing.
Good evening, council. I have lots of sources, Councilman Lawrence. Some may be close to you. We are paved, we've paved the eastbound lane of Howard Avenue. We have one lane left, the westbound lane of Howard, to do tomorrow. And then the last that they'll do is Coon Street, south of Howard Avenue. They'll do that as a pull-off-the-job site. So by tomorrow or Thursday at the latest, everything should be paved.
And how about the Pupa property? Y'all still looking at that? Did they do anything with that?
Nuke Case has a lot of work to do on service requests for fence repairs, some cracked sidewalks and driveways. So we're gonna be going over that with them. We're gonna direct them to go ahead and call an inspection so we can start buttoning this up and have them address those. And anything that they haven't done, we'll go onto a punch list that they have to do prior to a final payment.
And then punch lists will kick in on the three-year warranty?
Well, actually, no, it actually kicks in later than that, Mayor, because the way I wrote it up is the three-year warranty doesn't start to the day of council's approval of Nuke Case's final payment, which, you know, once they do what they're supposed to. So if they do everything they're supposed to, then the council can approve their final payment. And that's when the three-year warranty will start on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. I neglected to get a motion to discuss the routine agenda. Can I get a motion for that, please? Some of, Mr. Gans is here. A second by Mr. McGilvery. Thank you. Continue, Mr. Lawrence, anything? You wanna grill Mr. Rhodey on?
How about any, you got any nickels?
Well, right now, there's nothing in the Mississippi PA website. But last Thursday, we had our, we had our funding summary from MEMA. They're working on currently $497,000 for reimbursement to the city. Additionally, there is about 1.3 million that they're reviewing. It's part of our reconciliation change orders. You're familiar with those, where we pay, then we get a change order, then MEMA reviews, and then they reimburse us. So the next round of funds may be around $497,000, but it should be followed by over about 1.3 million after that.
Yeah, so you get the ninety-seven thousand first, then the 1.3.
It should be. Unless they decide to combine it, it's how quickly they can get done the reconciliation change or review of them. So they may just combine it all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Well, any other questions? Discussion, comments? All right, we'll call for the question on the routine agenda. All in favor of approving the routine agenda as presented? That's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you very much. Our next council meeting is Tuesday, February 18th at 1:30. That's two weeks from today. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to say something before we adjourn.
Sure, Mr. Lawrence.
I need to keep praying for Lisa. Kenny and them having a hard time. He getting ready to leave, go back over there now. So we just gotta keep in our prayers, Kenny. And hopefully it turns out the best for Lisa and yourself.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I'm sure the rest of the council feels the same way. So a motion to adjourn.
It's a mood.
By Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Gans. All in favor? We're adjourned. Good luck. Good luck.